To the September 19th, 1:30 PM Biloxi City Council meeting. I need a motion to amend the agenda.
So moved.
Suspend the rules, I'm sorry. A motion to suspend the rules.
Moved.
Second.
We have a first by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Guns. All in favor? Six to zero. Need a motion to amend the agenda.
She's got to read it.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
To the policy agenda, we're removing item 4D ordinance to amend the land development ordinance pertaining to recreational vehicle park. We're substituting item 4G ordinance pertaining to ambulance services. To the consent agenda, we're substituting item 5C exhibit only, resolution authorizing lease of Mercy Cross property. Adding 5K, resolution authorizing an amendment to the lease agreement with City of Biloxi, RW Development and Harrison County. Adding item 5L, resolution authorizing entry into special event agreement with Cruisin' the Coast.
Alright, motion?
I move amended.
Second.
Agenda as amended.
Alright, we have a first by Mr. Lawrence, a second by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion? All in favor? Six to zero. Will now move to our presentation agenda.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. We have Frank Bardot here. If he, to answer any possible questions on some lines of insurance, I think we did a great job last time. Any of y'all have any questions for Frank regarding the insurance and some of the things we talked about last week? Any questions? Okay. Alright Frank, thank you man, good job. You could say. Well, here comes the real program. Where's Ms. Hunt? Ms. Hunt, can I ask Ms. Hunt? Alright, she's going to give you some reports. One on the Mardi Gras museum and then on the Mayor's Youth Council and the lady with the bread, the bread lady. The indomitable Ms. Hunt. You have the microphone.
Hold the mic.
Hold the mic, so we can get in TV world out there. Hand it over.
I don't really need this.
It's for the folks at home.
Hey, I just want to thank y'all, Mayor, Administration, all y'all for everything that you do for the Biloxi, for the city of Biloxi. But I'm here today for two reasons, but I'm only going to hit the first one first about the coastal Mississippi Mardi Gras museum. Thank you for all your support and everything that you have done to make us successful. And now Anna Harris has got all the stats. She's going to talk and when she finishes, I'm going to share something else with you.
For your continued support, we appreciate it. In this quarter, we had 626 visitors from 39 different states and five different countries. We had a lot of wonderful tours. We had Boy Scout tours, a large bus tour from Tennessee, and of course our Biloxi summer camps, which we loved having them at the museum. I think they really had a wonderful time visiting with us this summer. We also had a wonderful event on July 12th, Beyond the Dazzle was a panel discussion and reception and we had a wonderful turnout of about 50 people and a great reception from that. So we look forward to having more events this coming year. So again, thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Alright Susan?
Okay. I'm not talking. I'm here to share with you, some of you might have talked about this maybe three years ago. The Mayor's Youth Council, a long time ago, I worked for the Mayor's Youth Council, we started that and then it kind of went away. So, in talking to, thank you. In talking to the mayor, he asked, we get, they are, other more people, they are young people, they want to be able to, we're going to give them opportunity, um, if we create insurance, I keep, they are getting educated, connected to the government, the cooperation, and we, we already have the record, we basically have the record, so they kind of know what's going on. And this is to give these young people an opportunity to, see with, provide them an opportunity to, run up, um, hopefully they will offer them out their leadership. I have a one page and three paragraphs, I can give it to you. Okay, good, good. Okay, uh, they're, we're probably decided this year, it's going to be talking to other schools and talking to the administrators. And we first started out doing twelve parades, we're doing all eleven parades. So they will be, this year they're eleven parades because of what they found through this process, the seniors have way too much on their minds, get ready to college. So, they will be, it will be, it will only be our two. So, um, we, we, we be the parents, we're going to be with the councils and schools, we allow the body members to take it, in our three schools, in our, our high school, uh, whole market, with the body members, and then we'll deal with St. Patrick's. Okay, so those are the three schools that will be given there. If y'all have a question, I'll be glad to speak to you. So whatever, and we're inside of applications to be, in, in our, in our, in our city, and then we'll have our first class, it's off December, and then it'll run through the twenty twenty. Okay, so once we get going, we'll give you all that information so that you know how it was going on. We'd love to, like asking questions, we'd love to, and I'll give the opportunity to work with our co-chairperson, Cecilia, and the co-chairperson, we were, is a one hour length. So, any other questions? Enjoy the bread, come for food, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. Thank you for everything you've done for this great city.
Thank you.
Thank you for the bread too, that's right.
You're welcome.
Okay, you might notice the flags up there right now, this is, we're getting ready for a pretty exciting week, end of this week, and that would be the visit to Biloxi City Hall and to the Croatian American Cultural Center for some receptions. We're lucky enough to have a great group of people, both for this reception and the one that will be at Tisbonia Lodge, for the President of Croatia and his delegation. I think he's bringing, coming from the United Nations, which is going on right this minute, to Biloxi with six of his top ministers and the ambassador who has been here last year in March, Simone, Simone Ovich, and council general from Chicago is here. So, we had an advanced visit with their Croatian security and our chief and his group is along with this Secret Service, pretty serious situation, but we're covering it, not a situation, it's a challenge, but we're going to meet that. So we're very, very excited about this visit coming up on Friday. I think you've got your invitations and so forth, so it's going to be a great week. George, I think you're going to report a little bit on Seafood Industry Museum after this, I won't waste time with that. Yeah, but it's exciting times, last couple of weeks, you know, with the event at Tunnel to Towers and the Seafood Industry Museum, the last couple of weeks been great. So, we're looking forward to the future. So that concludes my report, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you. I don't think we have any departmental reports, so we'll start with council reports, with Mr. Lawrence.
As Popo said, last Saturday night at the Seafood Museum, they had a great crowd, sold all the tickets, and an ex-councilman, David Fayard, won some of the money, his last ten split, five of them, so he won a few dollars, him and Kevin Ladner together. So that was a good thing, but it was a great crowd, good food, a lot of people showed up, a lot of great activities for the museum, also for Eastern Town. They had their event at Harris, like you said, the town, the last few weekends, there's been a lot of stuff going on. If you can't find something to do in Biloxi, you're not looking, because every weekend has something to do, and plenty of, a lot of people in town, that's a good thing. And one day actually, a male on the insurance, the enrollment, do we add people or we have the same amount of people as before?
I'm not sure.
We just kind of need to know that for the insurance committee, because y'all closed the enrollment, didn't you? And they shut down now?
No, it's not closed yet, closing on the 26th.
Closing on the 26th.
So, we just need that update for us, for the insurance committee to see how many people we actually have signed up. We had a few things we tried to adjust, we'll just see if any of it worked, so that's a good thing. The homeless on the park is, we still looking at something, doing something with Lighthouse Park, there's so many of them, they either have ten of them up in the front, ten in the back, we just can't seem to get our park back to it, you know?
Understand, it's a challenge and we're looking at every angle to, you know, provide a solution.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a great park, you know, I tell myself, it's a visitor center, it's just a center, we haven't had much trouble, you know? So I need you to, the local people just want you to address something, something we could do with the park, actually be turned back over to the people. And the communication guy wasn't here, said he wanted to have a mic working, I'll tell you, get the guy, he has these meetings, your I C man, whatever you call him, you know, got to have the mics working, this is recorded, so it has to be here, good, and on the VTV. You know, you get the man here to make sure these mics are working so we can record everything we're doing.
Yep.
Thank you.
Alright, alright, um, what did I want to do? Christie, well, well, I don't need, I just want to thank you for the road being paved over there by Mayor Mahoney's, so just make sure you pass that along. And I went out there on the Main Street crossing today, watched them as they were grinding up, trying to fix it. Is it true that they're going to open it up temporarily for a couple of days?
He told them that it had to be opened by the end of the day, if they don't open it, contact guns.
Have to get a lot of money.
Okay, okay, and I'll just check back with you guys in the morning, because, you know, like I said, this is the first day that they've worked in about two weeks, and they could have milled that up and been done with it before, but appreciate it. That concludes my report, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. Mr. Deming?
Chief, I've got a couple calls from people on where Waldo meets Old Bay Road, the beginning of Waldo, are you familiar with the area?
I am.
Travel down Old Bay Road off of Pops Ferry and it bends around to Mercedes Drive. I think people are just ignoring that stop sign completely. It is a, it is a bus stop for children, and I don't know if there's anything we can do. I know, you know, we are kind of short-staffed, we're just planting people everywhere all the time, but if there's anything you guys can come up with to help us, you know, remind drivers that there is a stop sign there?
We'll go out, take a look and see what we can do.
Okay.
Yeah, probably some enforcement and maybe some additional signs.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Jerry, there was a code enforcement action on, and you may not know this right off the top of your head, so you may have to get back to me, on 2428 Bay Vista Drive, I had some people contact the council office and send some emails regarding a vacant house, and they said there was a code office, or code enforcement sign there at one point, but the house is still a nuisance to the community. I'm not familiar with any action that's gone on there, nor am I familiar with the property, I'm going to go by there and look at it myself, but if you could, if you could-
I'll check on it.
Let me know what's going on and keep that on your radar for me, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Smith, I know Chrissy's not here and you may not know the, what progress getting all the paving and word forwards is at, I know she said they were going out for bidding at a certain time, can you just give me an update on the paving bids and what our schedule will look like for the area?
Yeah, we're awarding it to Huey Stocksdale, they were our lowest and best bidder, so we're gonna, once all those contracts are signed, they said they can start fairly quickly. We had the downtown streets on there first, just because a lot of them were partially tore up from the previous contractor, so they're going to do the downtown first, then they'll be moving into Ward Four second.
Great, great news, thank you Robert, I appreciate it. And last but definitely, definitely not least, Ms. Bell, can you just give me an update? I've got a couple of things about Pops Ferry, just the sports complex, the fields, where are we at on getting that project completed? Are we with lights? The field is closed.
Right.
I'm assuming it's closed for-
It's closed for the public, but our soccer leagues are using it for practice.
Okay, so it's not closed for a public safety purpose, is there, is there any way we could open those during the day? I mean, if soccer fields are using them, we have a lot of groups that have called me and said, hey, if it's a light issue, we could open it up from, I don't know, eight in the morning till maybe six at night, I look, the sun sets in the, in the January and February period at about 5:51, so six o'clock would be a pretty good shut-off point until we get those lights there, is that a possibility?
But they're wanting to use them during the day? Majority of them are wanting to come out there after-
Right, and I'm not concerned with the people that want to come out there after dark and there is no lights, I get that, and I think any reasonable person will understand that, but for, but for day play, can we open them up for day play? Can we schedule someone to open them up and close it down?
Look at it, I just, you know, right now the fields are in pretty good shape for our soccer league, I just don't want them, you know, to get any more damaged or holes or anything like that, we've been kind of taking care of them, trying to keep them playable for the rec leagues.
Where are the, where are the rec leagues playing at?
They're going to play out at Pops Ferry this year.
So the entire, the entire complex?
Yep, all except for the international field.
Alright, what shape is the international field in?
It's getting there. It was probably the worst one, and we went in there and top dressed it and did some other things. Probably in the next two to three weeks, it should be playable.
Okay, alright, thank you.
No, is it?
I said thank you. I just said thank you.
Oh, okay.
Got the hook.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, I'd like to wish my daughter, Virginia, a happy birthday today.
Alright.
Happy birthday. Spratley Avenue was paved, I think that was completed maybe early this morning, milled last week, I think, paved today. There was some drainage work done prior to that, so it's taken a little while, but it's done. Wanted to thank the city and the county, this is a joint project, and I know the, I know the residents there are very happy with that. Also, thanks to those who attended my ward meeting last Wednesday evening, both constituents and the city personnel was there, the mayor was actually signing autographs the first 20 minutes, and then he sprinted out of there, but it was a lively ward meeting, was it not? It was a lively ward meeting, and there was much discussion. Last thing, IP parking lot, I know that the city, I guess granted them an extension on a variance in like 2011 and 2012, and I think the last one that was approved by the city was 2012 with a two-year, I think it was a two-year extension, so at what point is it going to get paved?
We've, I've been trying to engage some of the top folks there to give us a prognosis on that, but you know, we're certainly want to push that because we had a manufactured homes conference that be depending on whether they paved that law or not, so it's at the top of my list.
Right, but they're not in compliance and hadn't been for probably 13 or 14 years, do we need to, I mean, put another, put another resolution on here, either to spur them on, or-
But, again, it's at the top of my list, and so we'll-
Top of the list, I can't get any better than that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Glavine?
No report.
And I have no report, so we will now move to the public agenda, citizens' comments. We will have a total allotted time of 45 minutes. Whenever you come forward, please state your name and address and sign in at the sheet on the table, and we will start on my left side and your right side of the room. So if there's anyone on my left side, your right side, that would like to speak, please come forward and sign in. Your other left side.
I'm Mandy Lawrence Hornsby, I am the librarian over the local history and genealogy department located in the downtown Biloxi library for the Harrison County Library System, and I thought it was a great opportunity with your diplomatic visitor on Friday to bring up some of the resources we have available to research your Croatian, or anyone who's interested in researching their Croatian heritage here in Biloxi in particular. The country has been through many names in the past hundred years, when our ancestors came, it would have been called, they would have been called Austro-Hungarians. It's also changed to the name of Kingdom of the Serbs, Croats and Slovenes, Yugoslavia, now Croatia. In our department, we have microfilm records and newspaper records and digital census records to help you track your ancestors that may have came from there. Also, we have the interment books for the Biloxi cemetery up until the 1930s, and we also have the Bradford Keith funeral records, which really help solve a lot of genealogy mysteries. And I just want to invite anyone who's interested to call us or come visit us and learn about the tragedies and triumphs of their Croatian ancestors, and thank you, and in which your diplomatic visitors will probably say, haval.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left, your right? My left, your right? Okay, you can come forward.
I just have a question, is this, we're here for one of the agenda items.
Okay, well, if you, you will only be able to speak on that if you're called on, on that, so if you want to speak about it, you can go ahead and, you have three minutes.
No questions.
And there's, during, during citizens' comments, there's no questions, it's just a commenting.
Hi, I'm Ann Thomas, I live at 331 Eastview Drive. We are here about the trucking ordinance, we have a problem, the house right behind me has a semi truck and trailer that park in their front yard, and, I mean, that's just one of our problems in our neighborhood, it's Edgewater Estates. And we have very weak water lines, he parks right there, and I know it's all, it's in his yard and also on the city right of way. So we're just hoping that we can get some help to get the truck removed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on my left and your right? My left, your right? Anyone else that would like to speak? Okay. Anyone on my right, your left? Mr. Bailey?
Appreciate being here again, wanted to talk about the ordinances that are, that are coming up, special events. Like I said, we looked over, had a chance to work with Peter on the ordinances, and I think the ordinance is in a situation that we can live with them as far as Cruisin' is concerned, I think all the other events, Mardi Gras and St. Patrick's Day, I'm not totally speaking for them, but I think they're, they're workable if we have to go this route with this ordinance, but I still have my concerns about it for the future, the interpretation of it, the enforcement of it, how that's all going to be handled, like I said, I think we all have a good understanding here today, and we know everybody, but down the road it's hard to say, you know, how things will work out for us. So I'm concerned about that, concerned about the future of special events, will there be more special events? This ordinance is pretty onerous when you, when you look at it for the first time, and it may affect us economically from a tourism standpoint, so concerned about that. Also, we've had a culture of people on Highway 90 with RVs and with these ordinances, that's going to be going away, so concerned about that, but you know, be happy here to work with the city as best we can as we move on into the future if this ordinance is passed. Today before you two is our agreement with the city, our special event agreement that we've had in place for years for Cruisin' the Coast, and I appreciate your support for, for the passage of that event today. And that, that, that agreement actually reminded me of some things about this ordinance and the fact that we've had that special event agreement in place for quite a while with the city, and I know there are other events that have working relationships with the city and the, the, the common thread amongst all of y'all, y'all listen, are listening to what I'm saying, but I'm listening to what y'all are saying as well, has been, we don't want to punish all the existing events with this special ordinance. Maybe in the future, at some point, there could be some exemptions for some of the folks that have been here for a long time, or maybe there's some criteria for that. Like I said, we've been doing this agreement with y'all for a number of years, and, and a lot of these other organizations have been here working with the city for a number of years, and this, this ordinance could be, you know, tailored more to first-time events or events that don't, do not work with the city on a regular basis, so that's something to think about. So, you know, that may be into the future, and that'd be, maybe after we get this in place and can work together to, you know, have a great ordinance that will satisfy everybody. So, just some thoughts on that, but like I say, I appreciate having the opportunity to work on this, and we'll continue to do so. Thank you very much.
Very good.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on my right, your left? Anyone else on my right, your left, that would like to speak? Alright, anyone in the back of the room that would like to speak? If not, citizens' comments are closed. We'll now move to the policy agenda. Ordinance A.
Ordinance to amend-
Ordinance to amend the code of ordinances pertaining to parades.
Alright, this was moved by Mr. Tisdale and seconded by Mr. Lawrence.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is actually, I think, going to be retitled the Special Events, correct? Right, it used to be parades, because that's all we had on the books at the time, as Chief Miller attested to, we really didn't have anything dealing with special events per se, merely parades. That being said, it's, it's rather extensive, I'm sure there'll be some wrinkles in the future, no doubt, that'll have to be worked out, but I think it makes a very strong effort to get some of these promoters onto the radar so we know who we're dealing with, and holds some folks accountable that haven't been held accountable in the past. That being said, I hope things go smoothly at all the events, because we'd love to have as many tourists here as we can. On the other hand, we want them to be well behaved as well. So anyway, I have no problem supporting this ordinance as it's written. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, I've been looking at all these things the last few weeks, and I don't think we've still addressed the problem, and I have a problem with that. And I don't see what we're doing any good for the people, done all the good things for the city, we attach this training to anything to them, but the problem we have, we're really not addressing. So I'm not going to support any of that for the audience at all, because I just don't see what we're doing, what we need to do to protect the people, there's a problem we had. When they pop up parties, Highway 90, people all over the beach, it's nothing to do with any of this, nothing. It's just putting control on special events, and we always welcome everybody in the city. We never had any problem until the last bad event we had, and that's what we need to address, the bad event, not all this. Thank you.
Alright, is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Okay, Mr. Deming?
Yeah, I'm really on the same side as, as Mr. Lawrence.
Yeah, I'm really on the same side as, as Mr. Lawrence. But I, I think, very similar to him with regard to this, with, with these ordinances. And you heard from Mr. Woody Bailey, who's been running an event in this city, and he didn't seem very optimistic about it. I mean, he, he made statements like, if this is the route we have to go. He has concerns with the same things that I've had concerns with, the enforcement, the interpretation of it in the future. I think that it does have an impact on, like he said, the culture of Biloxi's coastline, and it's quite onerous, especially to new, to new, to new events. When someone looks at it and decides where they want to go, and they see this. I do think the chief needs at least language to have more teeth. And I do support that, but that's why I wanted to see if we could look at that one portion and expand on that and give the, give the chief and, and all the first responders more, more actionability and authority. Other than that, I don't support this either, because I don't think it does accomplish the task that we're setting out to accomplish. And I think what it does is punish the ones that are good actors and have been participating properly. And then it also dissuades future events from coming to the coast. I think there's a better way to do what we want to do. I don't think this is the way. That's all I have.
All right, Mr. Tisdale?
Nothing to add.
All right, Mr.?
Yeah, well, and I'm kind of with George and, and Mr. Demming. I'm looking at it. I know what we want to do and what we're trying to do. And I know the intent is, is to get a rap on some things. However, I've, I've talked about a citizen or a people's council, and I still think that our citizens should be involved in this, because it affects them the most. So I kind of stand with George and Mr. Demming. Thank you.
Mr. Glavine?
Obviously, it looks like we're heading to a no vote for these, and I'd like to recommend maybe to table it again. I know we've tabled it, we've had workshops, we've talked about it, we've made some tweaks. But I'd, I'd like to propose to table it again for another 30 days. Perhaps we can get some of these elements that my colleagues are, are speaking about introduced in it. Maybe we can have more in-depth with Mr. Bailey and his group and others, just to make sure that we're getting this thing right. I know it's been a long time. We've been trying to get something on the books as the administration has been requesting and as Chief Miller has been requesting. We know other communities have similar ordinances in place, but we want to get this one right before we pull the trigger. So I propose that we table it for another 30 days.
I'll second that.
Okay, question. Now, we have six of these items on the agenda. Do y'all want to do these individually or all together?
I'll, um, you want to do them all individually?
Yeah, table them all.
You can group them all together.
Table them all.
Okay, so we'll do them individually then. Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second on the table to table item A.
When do y'all want to table it to?
Table, he said 30 days.
It is be the end of October. Third being October discussion, discussion.
You want to move all six of them? I mean, they're all going to be the same.
I have no problem recommending that we table all of these.
Make that note, motion, to do them together then.
So I withdraw my original motion to table item A.
I withdraw my second.
And I'll make a recommendation, recommendation that we table items A through F. Is that, I'm sorry, G?
No, I don't know that you want to do G.
F. Yeah. Items A through F, I'll make a motion that we table for 30 days.
I'll second that.
One of them on October 17th or 24th.
Whatever it falls within that 30-day period.
It would be closer to the 24th.
24th then.
So we'll table them to October 24th.
All right, so we have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Demming, okay, we, any discussion?
Yes. Mr. Abad, do you recall off the top of your head that, for some reason, it's rattling around in my head that after we approve this, events that fall within, was it three months, six months? Or am I thinking of something else? I thought upon passage, if this event, for example, if we approved it today, we've got Cruisin' the Coast in a couple of weeks, and it wouldn't be affected by this, obviously, because if, if all of this was approved, then, then have to file all this paperwork. There's a certain procedure that would have to be followed. So there's maybe, I don't want to call it a grace period, but it's just...
If, if it's approved, anything that's approved 30 days from now, it would take effect as to future events. If somebody's up against a deadline, the ordinance states that exceptions can be made to the hard and fast deadlines, if, if need be.
Okay. The, the other thing is, we've had three workshops, had an opportunity to talk with the council about it. We've had the chief pretty much say, "We have nothing on the books to deal with this. We don't have any major events coming up in the next..." Well, we do, we have Cruisin' the Coast, but that wouldn't be impacted anyway, whether we pass this today or a month from now. But chief, with what's being proposed, it would give you more authority, more latitude to deal with issues. Is that correct?
It, it absolutely would. And, and I would ask that, that you consider, instead of taking one big bite, that maybe we take some smaller bites. And I would recommend that, looking at 4F, before you reject everything today, just taking a look at, at that one, that would give us some authority to make things safer during events.
Yeah, that's, no, no, that, that's all I have to offer. I just wanted that to be clear. Thank you.
Mr. Demming?
I, I understand we have nothing on the books, and that's why I recommended that we pass that one section of the ordinance that I found. And chief, I don't recall after reading all these, which one is exactly 4F? Can you give me a rundown of what 4F is versus?
4F gives us, there's several things that it gives us authority to do, but, but one thing it gives us authority to do, and that is to, to regulate some of, of the needs that they have at, at particular events, and it, it increases safety. It, it actually forces people back away from the roadway for a distance, which is always a problem for us. That's actually where the crowds start getting into the road on, on particular events. So it gives us that authority to say, "You can't be this close to the roadway. You've got to be so many yards back." And it also requires that there be adequate facilities there for bathroom facilities, adequate security. It requires several things that I, I can't believe that, that anybody would reject. And I think most of, of the, the established events that we have now do many of those things currently.
Well, let me just, I'll just point out, it's clearly a valid, and they're all very good things that need to happen and occur. Some of these are within the LDO, which would require going through the planning commission, which is another layer of kind of regulation we'd be doing. I don't see how we could really pass or even go with just this one, because it has numerous references to the Special Event Committee. So I think we're either going to have a committee or we're not. We're either going to have wide-open events or we're not. I mean, it's, it's a fairly simple up or down.
Well, I only brought that up because they were, they were individually presented, is the reason that I, I brought that up, because that one does give a good bit of teeth to law enforcement.
Thank you, chief. If you have time, I'd love to come sit down with you and see if we can craft something, regardless of this, that would give you some teeth. And I do appreciate that. However, I still support the table. Like Dr. Tisdale said, there's going to be some wrinkles we have to work out. When, when I hear some of our, some of the, some of our larger events having some, some anxiety over this, that I feel like we should work out these wrinkles in as much as we can before we pass it. So I support the motion to table. That's all I have.
Mr. Glavine?
Yeah, thank you, councilman. And thank you, chief, for your comments. What we have today, if it appears, again, like I mentioned earlier, if this is moving toward a vote, it runs the risk of voting these ordinances down altogether. And I, before we go to that extreme, that is why I'm proposing this amendment, so that we can have a little more time to work on this, as we should, if there are still questions. That's only prudent for us to represent those who have elected us and not hastily run this through. So, so to avoid the risk of just these ordinance failing altogether, to ask for a little bit more time seems reasonable, so that we can put a couple more changes or altercations on these ordinances to try to get it correct. Thank you.
The only comment I have is, I know that what we have in front of us isn't a perfect, a perfect finished product. However, if we go back to April and remember, the citizens in this city, they basically gave us an ultimatum to do something to prevent what happened in April from happening again. At that meeting, every one of us said, "We're going to do, chief, we're going to give you whatever tools you need." I don't believe that this is a perfect finished product. I believe that there's, and, and Peter and I have discussed this, I believe that there's other things that need to be stacked, as far as curfews, restrictions of alcohol, things like that, during certain time periods to prevent some of the stuff. But I told you that I'm going to, you know, give you the tools that you need, so I'm going to be opposed to tabling it. And like I said, I don't believe this is a perfect product. I believe that, you know, there's a lot of work that needs to be done in this still. But, but that, that's just, so I'm going to be opposed to tabling it. Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. And, and I'm just a little, little frustrated, since we had three workshops spread over, I guess, two and a half or three months. We've had numerous opportunities for public input, for discussion, and here we are today, looking at delaying it further. And while I understand, as has been said just about by everybody up here, it's not perfect, we need to do something. And it's taken us several months to get to this point where we're just going to sit on it for another 30 days. But if that's what it takes to pass it, I won't, I won't support that. I'll vote with the president on this, not to table it, but, you know, hopefully, if, if that's where we end up, we'll come up with a better set of ordinances than what we have. But we've had plenty of time to discuss with whoever in the administration, the attorney, the police chief, to, to do all that. Thank you.
One more comment.
I just want, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I just want to say, I would have voted for it today, because I do believe that we need to get something on the table, just like we've, it's been months. And the only reason it came back up is because it is, they'll brought it back up right now. Otherwise, we'd probably be pushing down the can even more. I don't, again, I don't think that it's perfect. I think that it can be tweaked, and most times, things can be tweaked once they are in progress, and then you understand what needs to be tweaked. But I also am not against tabling it, but I do like Felix's idea of getting actual citizens involved on the committee. That's it.
I think I've been pretty consistent the whole time. You know, and I, I heard what you said, but, Mr. President, but I was consistent about having citizens' input and citizens involved in this process. I didn't see that in any part of it, and that's why I consistently said that over and over and over. And I know the citizens wanted something done. Is this the right way of going by doing it? I don't know. But from what I see right now, I'm not there. And that's why I've consistently opened the door for our citizens. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
I'd, I'd just like to make, I know I've made a couple of comments. I hope we won't sit on it for another 30 days. The motion is not intended to sit on it or, or delay it. I've heard from other entities in the tourism, from the Tourism Bureau and many others, that have raised some new concerns. And, and I think that we should not sit on this. We should proactively continue to pursue making sure that we get everything in this and make the changes to make this the right ordinances. This is a lot of them. This isn't one ordinance we're talking about, if you look through all of them. And it's going to impact a lot of people, and, and especially when our tourism industry hangs in the balance of being affected by this. We should make sure that we did, we took all of the allowed time to get this right. And I would encourage no one to sit on this. Be proactive, be involved, be engaged with it a little bit further, and see if another 30 days, we can make a couple of changes to, see if we can do some of the things that some of our colleagues are suggesting. Thank you.
All right, with that, we have a motion on the table that the mayor has...
Comment.
Yes, sir.
A wise man said perfection is the enemy of progress. Okay? Did you say that, Mike? Somebody said it, but no. Perfect is the enemy of good health. Perfect is a, yeah, it's, well, anyway, progress is what we need to make. And I've heard from every side you can imagine. And somebody has to put some trust in this process and to make a call. You know, everything can be tweaked. Nothing's perfect, and that's what I would encourage. But we, we're, we're playing with some things we don't need to be playing with. So let's come to a conclusion. Thank you.
All right. With that being said, we have a motion on the table to table items A through F until October 24th, or if something gets resolved prior to that. We have a first and a second. We've had discussions, so now I'll call for the question, all in favor of tabling. All right, all opposed? We have five in favor, myself and Mr. Tisdale, and opposition. We'll now move to item G on the agenda.
Ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances to add ambulance services.
All right. This was moved by Mr. Tisdale and seconded by Mr. Lawrence.
Well, I have... Yeah, I'm thinking, chief, guys, if you don't mind coming up and sort of giving us a, a status report, so to speak, to see where we are in this process.
So this ordinance is just basically protecting the city. So when we established our EMS district back in June, we needed to put some, some verbiage on the table in our ordinances to reflect that. This is basically just protecting our, us as a city and our citizens from, say, a fly-by-night ambulance service coming in and operating in the city, now that we're, we're kind of different than the county. This is actually, we use the county's bones of their ordinance to make this ordinance, so it's very similar to what we've been operating under for the past 40-plus years.
So if I understand correctly, the municipalities in Harrison County may be going their separate ways on this?
There is the possibility. We, we, of course, issued our RFP on Friday. It is out, you know, public. They're able to do their...
Due diligence.
To us. They'll be coming to us October 6th is the deadline, I think. Now, this is, this ordinance is separate from, from that process. Me and my staff are still meeting with the county, Pat Sullivan and all the other cities in the county, to develop a RFP for them, because they have to do the same. Gulfport is also their own EMS district now. We all kind of did that at one time. So there is a possibility that us in Gulfport could be separate from the county. That's not our intention or our hope, but there is that possibility, yes, sir.
Let me offer also, I'll repeat again, perfection is the enemy of progress. And we didn't, we didn't wait. We actually put what we thought was together in a need, you know, considering the needs, our actual needs and responses. There's been some tragic things that have happened, because if we'd had some things in place that assure more responsive to some of these things that we're challenged with. So we didn't waste time in this. And I think the, the rest of the entities, when it was mentioned, we took the bull by the horns and went forward with this, and, and they can follow, and we can do the things together, with or without. But we're not in a, you know, we're not going to be in a position to be drug along.
Thank you. Somebody else may have questions.
For clarification, this was seconded by Mr. Guns. So, Mr. Guns, you have any comments? Okay, Mr. Lawrence?
Are we working to wind up with our own ambulance service? Because that's what we should be doing. If this is the first step to do that... should be doing. If this is the first step to do that, I'm all for it. We don't need to be tied into these people that don't, don't respond. They're 35, 40 minutes late, and they make all the money. Do you mind setting this up through fire department? A lot of the authorities do that. Run their own ambulance service out of the fire department. We got the people trained to do that. We could do that. We could build, the county could pay us, all that works. So if we doing it, if that's where we're going, I'm not into tying to another ambulance service. They're 35, 40 minutes late every time.
Well, let me, let me respond.
Yeah, do something. The mic don't work either.
This mic works.
In case you wanna know that.
This mic works.
Yeah, right.
Anyway, there's a lot to consider, you know, doing this yourself, liability is being one of them, and response to massive things that we, we could face. There's some, there's upsides of, of, uh, uh, being part, doing third-party agreement, and I think that's where we're tending at this point in time. We've talked to some, uh, major folks that would have interest in Biloxi, given the situation. We're, we're different than any other municipality in Harrison County, and, uh, that's, I think, the, the nuts and bolts are in that RFP. So, uh, uh, it's one thing to, you know, to control every aspect of it, but you gotta have an ability to reach out for assets that we don't have, we cannot support, you know, doing it ourselves. Certainly, uh, you know, given the situation where there may be some compromise or, or, uh, benefit to, to doing things ourself, but this is all, we're hopeful that we've been, uh, put down in an RFP that gives us a lot more control, a lot more say-so in, uh, what we deal with day-to-day.
So there, there are various aspects. We've looked into doing it ourselves. Um, the manpower that we require, the, uh, ambulances, uh, it takes longer to get an ambulance, uh, right now with the current, uh, market. Uh, takes longer to get an ambulance than it does to get a fire truck built. Um, just because they're built basically on a, a, a commercial chassis, uh, it's, it's almost impossible to get. Um, you know, we would have to expand the fire department, uh, significantly to run that many ambulances. You could do a hybrid system like Mobile does, um, but that would take quite a bit. Um, billing is a nightmare. Um, from what I understand, talking to other, uh, cities around our side that, that have taken on that aspect, they've gone $6 million in the hole before they ever really start seeing any kind of profit. So we've got some good, um, options. Uh, we've, we've got, uh, including AMR, the one that's currently serving us. We've got three others that have approached us and spoke to us, and, uh, really excited. I think we're gonna see some good, some good proposals from, uh, from all four, uh, companies that we've seen, and there might be others that might do also some, uh, some interesting things that'll help us from a city aspect.
The language in this, in this, um, ordinance would allow us to do that if, if, you know, we chose to do that.
Another one I thought that took it over, and they used the rescue units as ambulance. And after just modify them a little bit, wasn't that much money to do that. And I don't know how you lost $6 million. Did you bill the insurance and everybody else just like everybody else got? And there's no way you're gonna lose $6 million. You build an insurance company, that's a thousand dollars to pick up. You're not gonna lose $6 million. So whoever done that, uh, that's, that's not a good thing. Because you get the bill, just like the insurance company, y'all would be billing the patient for the same thing. They're gonna pay it anyway.
Yes, sir.
That's all I'm just saying. It's out there, there's a lot of money to be made. And none of these insurance companies going busted. They pay a lot of money for those services. Why you think AMR and them do that? That's why. Because they make a ton of money. And use the excuse, we can't get there on time. So.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. Mr. Demming, do you have anything?
Uh, the only thing I have is your adage about patience. There was another wise man once that said, about perfection is what you had, right? There's another wise man that said, "Impatience is the root of all your problems," and that may have been Mike as well. Um, but I think.
Mike's pretty smart. We, we, we have not been impatient, though. We've been.
I'm saying that the goal is to be somewhere in the middle, and I don't think the, I don't think the, uh, the council is, I mean, prudence is important, and due diligence is important. I think this is important. I support this. Um, Peter, if we could, at the end, I want to talk to you about the 18-wheeler, or the commercial trailers, or tractors, or whatever those are called. I'm not a trucker, so I don't know what the terminology is, for the, for the devices that haul trailers or flatbeds. So if we could talk after that, try to find some way to mitigate those things in neighborhoods.
Sure.
But I'm in support of this. That's all I have. Mr. Guns, and, uh, Ms. Newman, um, Mr. Glavine?
I have nothing.
One last thing. I'd just like to say this real quick. The firemen always at first. And firemen do 90% of the job, and then the ambulance service comes up and they make $1,500, doing nothing. That's my problem with that. That's why I think we can do it ourselves, and well, because they, they there before anybody. They know the city. Them ambulance, they go park, grab the park, they, that's why they're so late. But, I mean, that wouldn't be the case. That's all I'm saying. I mean, that's just sitting there. That's why you create a lot of money.
And we intend to keep exploring, uh, you know, the avenue that you're talking about, but right now, I don't think we're in the position to, to make that step right, right away.
Mm-hmm. So, I'm not saying, just work on it till we get it right.
Yes, sir.
It's a good thing for the city. And y'all do it anyway.
I, I have a couple of questions. Um, so we sent, we approved this RFP, and then we get bids in, uh, from multiple, um, emergency, um, services. That doesn't mean that we have to accept any of those, correct? So I know that we're working with the other municipalities and the county as well, and there was supposed to be an RFP that was coming in by the 18th. Has that happened?
Uh, yes. They have a draft. I think all of the, uh, the current board of supervisors have a draft. Pat Sullivan told me this morning that he had, he had emailed it to them. They have time to, to look over it. He's hoping that we can get on, uh, that they can get it looked at on Friday. I think they already have a meeting scheduled at 10:00 or 10:30, uh, for another, uh, issue that they were going to address. Um, he's trying to get it on there. That way we can kind of coincide with the Biloxi and a county thing going. Um, he still has not confirmed yay or nay on.
Okay, so my question is this. If, if, um, the RFP from the county meets all the requests of the city of Biloxi, are we going to, are, are we going to go that route if all of our requests are met, or are we leaving it on the table that, for us to still be able to go on our own?
I think we'd have a, we'd look at the apples and oranges. I think we'd come up with the recommendation, and the council would make that decision.
Okay. All right, that's all I have. Uh, any other discussion? Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Guns, Ms. Newman, Mr. Demming, Mr. Tisdale, Mr. Glavine? Nothing? All right. If not, I'll call for the question. All in favor? Seven zero. We'll now move to ordinance H.
Ordinance to amend the code of ordinances to add alcoholic beverages consumption and storage on unlicensed premises.
All right, this was moved by Mr. Glavine.
So, um, is this coming from, uh, planning, Jerry? Is this coming from, who's this coming from? What department does this fall?
From the administration and police.
So what exactly, you know, is this gonna control or, or regulate?
What, what this deals with is, uh, you know, some restaurants will allow you to bring liquor or a bottle or wine to your business while you have dinner. Uh, there's, there's other businesses that provide, it provides them a loophole. They don't have an ABC license. They don't have a liquor license, and at midnight, they may serve french fries and tell everybody to bring their own bottle, and bring their own liquor. And they hold, they hold their liquor for them. Uh, it's essentially a brown bag ordinance. Uh, pretty common to have this sort of ordinance north of Jackson. I guess on the coast, we never really had anything like this. But, uh, basically, if you. Yeah, we did. We just didn't have a ordinance or, or whatever. It was a real brown bag, yeah. But, uh, if you have a, if you have a liquor license or an ABC permit, it doesn't affect you at all. If you, uh, eh, eh, but if you don't, and people are bringing liquor, or you wanna allow people to bring their own liquor, it just says after midnight, you can't, they can't serve the liquor. It, it's a kind of a 12 o'clock curfew for liquor.
Okay. I have no other questions.
So basically, if a restaurant, and I don't know any in Biloxi, but I know Phoenicia does this in Ocean Springs, you can bring your bottle of wine and, you know, they'll serve you.
Mr. Green?
That, that would not prevent that in the city of Biloxi, but since this is from 12, midnight until 7:00 a.m., this would prevent, let's say, an establishment that's having a big party, um, from a bunch of people bringing alcohol in, that they don't have their ABC license or can't get one. It would prevent them from basically selling chips or something and saying that, using that loophole to be able to have a club that can't have alcohol and have it, or something of that nature. Is that what the purpose of this is?
Exactly.
All right. Uh, Mr. Lawrence, any questions?
This, you compete with the beer license and the wine license. That's a lot of ones that let you bring the bottles in and stuff like that. So why are you affecting those businesses? There's a half a dozen of them in town, town.
If they have an ABC license, they said it doesn't affect them.
I just said, there's a half a dozen don't have ABC license. You trying to deal, a lot of them have just wine and beer. That's not an ABC. That's not alcohol. That's the difference. You got a lot of people that invite them to eat, at a pizza place on the fast road, bring your wine in there, don't have a liquor license. They're two different licenses.
They could do that up until midnight. I don't, I don't know of any business, we didn't know of any business.
And we all, once again, stepping in somebody's business.
Well.
I mean, these people are doing business in the city of Biloxi, bringing people downtown. Now you wanna affect that? You know, I can't support that. You putting too many handles on everybody's business. And you can't regulate ABC, they do that. You trying to do something with ABC that you not, you can't do that.
You can absolutely, you can absolutely regulate this. This is absolutely able to be regulated, what we're doing here.
Yeah, that's right. The city's regulating somebody else's business. So, I mean, you're affecting people that open up business in town and doing what they can, the way they can't afford the ABC license, or they wanna sell, serve alcohol. That's up to them. None of us.
So you still have to have some type of license to sell wine and beer, correct?
That's correct.
So does that apply to them as well? Or no?
ABC is strictly alcohol.
I, 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 I know that you can't just sell wine and beer without some type of license or permit. Yeah.
Usually, the wine alcohol content is lower, and it falls under a beer license. And if it, uh, if the alcohol content is higher, it falls under the ABC license for, for wine that has a certain alcohol content. But what we're trying to say is those establishments that don't have a wine or beer or liquor, uh, license, they would allow, and I've been in those establishments where you can bring a brown bag of something in it. And you mentioned, uh, Phoenicians. You know, we've, we've had dinner there and brought our own wine and are allowed to consume it. They're at our table.
I think midnight is the key in this.
That's correct.
All right, Mr. Guns?
Yeah.
This only pertain to businesses, correct?
No, it says lodges and, no, no.
It also allows to clubs.
Kind of clubs, right.
Clubs, lodges.
Yeah. You know, it affects everybody.
Because, because they're, they're, you know, some parties don't get started till after 12:00 midnight. And, uh, I'm a member of a lodge, and to say that we can't bring our alcohol in then kind of rain on some of the parades.
Or dance.
Yeah, damn it. Bring your own bottle. There's a lot of them.
Yeah.
It's not a good thing.
Different regulations for the public lodges.
It's one of those.
Because it affects everything that anybody that bring it in bottles affects anything. You have a dance, you have a fundraiser, whatever. It affects everybody.
I'm looking at this now, hours of consumption.
Not good. I think the intent is to specifically address some of the people that are trying to go around this, these things that normal situations would, would be covered by some paperwork easily done. There are some issues with, with regard to the meat of this ordinance to address those specific problems. Now, you know, 90-10 rule, you know, 90% of the stuff you gotta do impacts 90, 10% of the situation. So this is part of the 90% paperwork, I think.
Mr. Guns, do you have any other questions?
Don't read this, dude.
Okay. Mr. Demming?
I have a question.
Mr. Tisdale? Mr. Glavine? All right, and I don't have any questions, any? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Chief, is this a policing issue? Has this created a, a problem downtown, or is this just a revenue issue?
Yeah, it's created, there are some problems related to this.
And, and that's fair.
Yeah, we've had, we've had several problems with, uh, businesses that, uh, are just really trying to bypass the law and have parties and things like that. And it's also, it's not, it's not fair to the people, the businesses that have actually gone out and gotten their liquor licenses and are playing by the actual rules. But yes, there's been, there's been issues. Many times, or as long, as, as far back as I can remember, there's been issues.
Okay. So, Mr., uh, before you go, real quick question. Are those issues, what type of businesses are those issues coming from?
Well, a lot of times, they're businesses that, that, uh, have a sign-out that claim to be a nightclub, and in reality, they don't have a liquor license. Uh, but they're, they're portraying themselves as a bar or, or a, uh, you know, as a business where you can come in and have some drinks, and their halutivity is they don't have a liquor license at all. Or they have some restricted, restricted license that won't allow them to sell liquor past midnight.
Okay. All right, Mr. Tisdale?
You might see some of, from what you just described, you might see some of this as some of these special events that we have down.
You absolutely do. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Not, not, not unusual at all.
Right, thank you. Okay.
One quick quest, uh, not a question. It's like I say, you probably have one or two of them, but you're gonna affect six, seven, eight other people. So, I can't think a lot. Yes, you affect a lot of people. That's gonna have dances and stuff like that, bring your own bottle. You can't do that now. Or dance got in, or your business gotta be shut down by 12. Or your fundraiser's gotta be shut down by 12. That's the problem. Yeah, I don't doubt that they don't have that. Hey, one on Oak Street did that. Should've been shut down, you know? Well, shut them down when they doing that. They got the air permit from the city. They did something wrong, shut them down. Don't let them reopen. Not hard to stop all that. I mean, you can't, same thing here. You penalizing, a lot of people do good, and just serve food and do everything right. And having fundraisers and event, the lodges, the clubs, different places. That includes everybody in this thing. Everybody.
Thank you.
Mr. Demming?
One last thing. Oh, and I don't know, because I'm not in this industry, but beer and wine, is that excluded, as, as Mr. Lawrence said, is that excluded from ABC licensing?
Yes. ABC is actually.
The higher alcohol content.
ABC is actually who made us aware of this, that, uh, we had, uh, a club that opened recently, and they did not have an alcohol license. And when we checked with ABC, they said, you know, they didn't even have an application for that club. Uh, they said, but you know, they have a way of getting around it. You know, they'll just tell people, "Hey, we're gonna open up, just bring your own bottle," and, um.
Get the money off.
Come on in and drink. And then it turns into something, something else. Now, with regard to the, the club and the lodge, there are different regulations about that because our ordinance says that with a, a club or a lodge, you have to have a membership list, and only members and a certain guest can come in with them, and there has to be somebody there taking names at the door. But what's happened is, is that we've got some clubs and lodges that have gone way beyond that, you know, and just opened up to the public to come in for events. Um, so the, uh, ABC is actually the ones that told us about it, and Council McGlavin is right, there's a separate beer license for those that they obtained from us in our department, so.
I, I have a question. I don't believe that all wines, I think certain wines, it depends on the alcohol content in the wine, because you can go to a, everything that a liquor store sells is provided through ABC.
That's correct. Light wine, yes.
And anything you can buy in Walmart does not fall, or, or any grocery store does not fall under ABC. And so, certain alcohol content wines do fall under them, and, and so if you have a license for just beer and light wine, you can't serve, you know, regular red wine or something like, you have, it's like Boone's and stuff like that, that has a very low content of alcohol is what you're able to serve. Um, most wines do fall under ABC.
How about that moonshine up around your neck of the woods?
What's the, what's the licensing requirements?
That falls under CBS.
What's the licensing requirements for a beer and light wine license?
I think that's through the health. I think that's through the health department, isn't it?
Uh, health department is involved in that. We, we actually issued a license for the, the beer in our department. Um, and there are certain regulations that involve, you know, the distances to churches and those kind of things that have to be met in order to, to, uh, obtain a license.
Um, so, I'm sorry. Strange thought went through my head about distances to churches and wines. Um, okay. So the health department, which is a state entity, regulates beer and light wine licensing with you?
We, we issue the license and any license that we issue, we send it to the state, you know? And if there's a, a problem, we're, we're notified about it.
But the state doesn't have any regulatory authority over issuing that license. You just send it to them? Or is it required that we send it to them?
Not, not that I'm aware of. No. We just, we notified them that, uh, we've issued a license. So that, I guess they add it to their database.
So, so then what is, what do we require someone in order to get a beer and light wine license?
There, there's nothing, I mean, they just have to show that they've got a business license and that they meet the distance criteria from, from some of those entities like day chairs, those kind of things.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. If not, I'll call for the question. All in favor? All opposed? We have a four to two vote. Myself, Mr. Glavine, Mr. Tisdale, and Mr. Demming in favor. Mr. Guines and Mr. Lawrence in opposition. And Ms. Newman, Newman is out of the room. We're moving on. So, all right. We're now move to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second.
All right. We have a first by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Tisdale. Uh, we'll start with Mr. Lawrence with, on discussion.
On, uh, C. Charlie, Peter, this, uh, what we doing, uh, doing a lease, the diocese on a mercy cross property? Are we involved with the other part of that, of property with, uh, Harrison County Waste Utility?
Yeah, the utility authority is the owner of the south half.
They own it?
They own it.
They own, okay.
And they have, they have, uh, allowed the city use of that property for whatever we need to use it for. I think the helicopter, uh, emergency helicopter has been using that parking lot area. And this is about the level with the ball field. The north half is still owned by the diocese. And Lowe's and Fishes are using the gym portion right now. This is something the diocese, uh, there's, there's, uh, the grass in the parking lot there. And there's still ample areas to the north part in the grass that the city could use for storage, uh, any other municipal purpose. I think the helicopter lands there sometimes. And we had actually already passed that agreement with the diocese. And this is just to recognize that the Lowe's and Fishes can continue to use what they've been using in the gym.
Well, the gym itself, what, uh, who's gonna control that?
Uh.
Him that say.
The gym. The-
Building.
The power bill on the gym is being paid by Lowe's and Fishes in the gym. But it's a large enough gym that if we needed to store stuff in the gym as well, we probably put a partition in and they could use a piece of it and the city could use a piece of it.
Okay. And, uh, this is new agreement with, uh, what is that, R and W? It just is extending the lease?
Well, it's actually the, the original lease said that the lease payments would start in two years. Uh, and basically the, the lawsuit that was filed that we won, it's now been two years. So it's just making it clear that the lease money will start October first and that, uh, the term of the lease, we're using the same term as a tidlands lease, uh, a long-term lease. Also put in there that if there are businesses on that pier, in that pier area, that the city and the county would receive five percent of the, uh, of the gross, uh, income from those activities that are on the pier.
The, the city actually own it? Nah?
We on the right to build a pier there.
You on the right to build a pier. So the property belongs to, to the state or the county?
Well, that was-
I know we beat in the court.
That's what we, that's what we argued about for two years. The, the county, their position was that they have ownership or control of the sand beach. The Secretary of State's position was that since they own the beach technically, that, that we had to get permission from them to do anything. And what the case was about, it said, there's other statutes that give the city and the county the right to, uh, build piers and do things without getting permission from the state.
Okay.
So that's what we're proceeding under.
Yeah, that's, that's what we fought to get.
Yes, sir.
Worked out good for, thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Mr. Guines?
None.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Demming? Mr.?
Doing so well.
Ms. Newman, I apologize. Mr. Newman?
Mr. Newman.
Robert?
I have nothing.
See, this is how rumors get started, but it's also why the general public tunes in. I have no questions.
And I have nothing. So I'll call for the, the vote and then I'll ask for exceptions. Um, all in favor of the consent agenda, six to zero. Any exceptions, Mr. Lawrence? Mr. Guines? Ms. Newman? Mr. Demming? All right. No exceptions. Now move to the code enforcement hearings.
Item A, Onthy Brown, eight thirteen Elder Street. That case has been resolved. Emma Weems Deonella, three eighty-seven Oak Street. That case has been resolved. Item C, ESPIN Enterprises LLC, four seventy-three Jim Money Road. That case has been resolved. Item D, Mississippi Department of Transportation, four forty-five Kivett Street. This case, we sent a notice to, uh, the Department of Transportation and, uh, Kelly Castleberry called me back and told me that this is a property that's catter corner across from IP on that southwest corner and never seems to be really cut thoroughly. And, uh, he informed me that under the agreement that we have with them, that we're supposed to be cutting that area there. So I got with Mr. Abid this week to check into it. Mr. Castleberry was also supposed to be sending me some documentation that showed that, that we have that responsibility. And I've not yet received that. So, um, I'll get back in touch with him again and see what's holding that up. So on this one, I guess what we'd say is that it's resolved.
Well, I have a question.
Okay.
Um, did you ask him why they weren't keeping up their end of the agreement we have with them on keeping our interstates smooth?
Uh, no, I didn't, I didn't get into that. But, uh, uh, we're, we're checking into this and hopefully we can cut it. I mean, it's at the foot of that ramp and everybody sees it when they come into town. And it really needs to be cut. We've also got a-
Something on the table, sixty days until you get all this straight away.
Well, I, I guess what we'd do is call it resolved, uh, and then let us pursue this documentation that he's got. So, okay. Uh, item E, Timothy Parker, seven forty-one Highland Drive. That case has been resolved. Mythi Quatch, three seventy-four Oak Street. I would ask for thirty days on that one.
So move.
Second. All right. We have a first by Mr. Uh, Guines, a second by Mr. Tisdale. All in favor? Six to zero. Thirty-day extension for item F.
Item G, William Russell Heron, three eighty-four Park Drive. This was given a sixty-day extension back in July and it's still in violation.
All right. Is there anyone here on behalf or in opposition to William Russell Heron, three eighty-four Park Drive? Anyone on the council? If not, this case is closed.
Okay. Item, item H, Larry Jones Jr., one three oh six one Hudson Crown Road. Uh, this one is still in violation.
All right. Anyone here on behalf or opposed to Mr. Larry Jones, thirteen oh six one Hudson Crown Road? All right. If not, this case is closed.
Okay. Item I, Quang In Nguyen, two one six six Sherwood Place. That case has been resolved. Item J, Reginald Collier, three forty-five Fayard Street. This property's still in violation.
All right. Is there anyone here for or opposed to Reginald Collier, three forty-five Fayard? Anyone on the council?
I, I talked with the inspector. I thought they had one of them cut. Um, um, because I went and checked on it last week. Last week.
These were taken yesterday, Mr.?
Oh, yesterday?
Yeah.
Okay. Cause he, cause I did call him and he said he had sent, he was getting ready to send the, uh, grass cutters out.
Okay.
Yeah. So I might ask for thirty days, just thirty more days.
I'll second that.
Go ahead.
We have a first, um, and a second for thirty-day extension. All in favor?
Yes.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Six to zero. Item K?
Item K, Juliet Francesca Milan, sixteen fourteen Gordon Avenue. This property's still in violation.
All right. Is there anyone here for or against Juliet Milan, sixteen fourteen Gordon Avenue? All right. Anyone on the council? All right. If not, this case is closed. We'll move to the routine agenda. Have a motion?
Second.
Have a first by Mr. Lawrence, a second by Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Lawrence?
Hey Walt, we're gonna have some money in by now, huh?
Getting pretty close, Councilman. So this, this morning, when I checked the update, there's currently nine hundred fifteen thousand dollars that is in Mississippi PA. It's what's in that step four or five we often talk about here. It's been in there for only one day today. So we should have it in our accounts in the next seven to ten days. And that is supposed to be followed up, uh, within another seven to ten days, getting into the system of one and a half million. So it's coming along, along, a little bit slower than what it should be. But, um, I think that phone call last Thursday helped out to clarify our issues with them.
I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Tisdale? Any other discussion? All right. I'll call for the question. All in favor? Six to zero. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No move. Second.
Have a first by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Tisdale. All in favor? Six to zero.